We have a public hearing to start this evening. The public hearing is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to rezone parcel numbers 028-19A-21273, 038-19A-21271, 028-19A-21272, 028-19A-21274, and 028-19A-21270 from R3 High Density Urban Residential to C2 Central Business District. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the Planning Commission's recommendation? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Basic summary is, in August 14th of 2014, the Planning Commission concluded a review of the rezoning request initiated by Habitat for Humanity of Medina County to rezone properties within the 200 block of West Smith Road. On January 9th, 2014, the Habitat for Humanity began the process to rezone just 223 West Smith Road from R3 to C2. After the Planning Commission public hearing, there was a, after the discussion during that, the applicant requested to postpone the hearing under discussion that the Planning Commission suggested that incorporate adjacent properties to the east and west immediately on the north side of Smith Road to 223 to enlarge the area of the rezoning to reduce the perception of spot zoning. That came back, they were able to coordinate the adjacent property owners, and that's listed as the properties that were listed that you read off specifically as 223 West Smith, 207 West Smith Road, 213, 229, and 253 South Elmwood Avenue. This would complete a C2 zoning along that 200 block of West Smith Road. It was the south side of Smith Road in that stretch is already all zoned C2. This would complete a district of C2 and make it more, would make the properties to the north more developable because a single-family residential, due to the amount of traffic on Smith Road and the very obtuse angle of the railroad crossing, Smith Road is really not conducive to residential redevelopment in particular. That was part of the argument, and you know, it's a, that's an appropriate stance within the, in terms of the zoning in that area. So on August 14th, 2014, the Planning Commission reviewed the revised rezoning application and recommended approval to rezone the above properties from R3 to C2.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the rezoning?
Can we ask questions?
Sure, Mr. Lamb?
Well, thank you. So Jonathan, what is the traffic count on Smith Road compared to the traffic count on other thoroughfares that are comparable in the city?
I do not have that information.
And have residential housing?
I don't have that information.
Part of the reason, though, for the rezoning was based on the traffic on Smith Road?
Yes, but there was not specific counts created and presented as well. It's more of an anecdotal experience with that stretch of Smith Road.
So we don't know the difference in the traffic count on Smith Road then compared to South Court, East Liberty, West Liberty, Route 57, where there is residential?
No.
No.
Is there anybody else that has any comments for or against the rezoning of the parcels? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. I call the Medina City Council meeting for October 27th to order. If you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, for the nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Real clerk, please call the roll.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colzar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting, October 14th, 2014, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to tonight's council meeting and will meet prior to the next council meeting, and there are several items on the agenda. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, and I'm working to get a meeting scheduled with the Safety and Health Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, October 28th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Special Legislation will meet this Wednesday at 5:30.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled at this time, nothing to report.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colzar.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings to report, or nothing to report, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 14-216, 2015 Membership Renewal for Main Street Medina, 14-217, Amending Section 13301 Association Memberships, 14-218, Adopting Fees Schedule for Planning and Zoning, 14-219 FMVE for West Smith Road Reconstruction, 14-200, Amending Chapter 1311, 2011 Plumbing Code Permit Fees, 14-221, Increase PO 2014, 869 Davis Tree Farm, 14-222, Increase PO 2014, 281 Signal Service Company, 14-223, Amending Ordinance 161, 14 Additional Auction Items, 14-224, Easement, West Smith Road Parcel Number 14. And we have one item for special legislation, 14-225, Discuss Possible Legislation to Regulate Donation Bins/Boxes. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to share with the viewers, the city has an LST levy on the ballot this fall. I believe it's issue number one from the people I've heard from that have pulled early ballots, and this is an LST levy renewal. We've had questions of what this is about, and the LST levy funds our Advanced Life Support Care and Ambulance Service from the Medina Hospital, which operates Medina Hospital, the Cleveland Clinic. We also use our Safety Forces, Police, Fire, and LST to all work collaboratively, and as a result, we're saving lives pretty routinely. So our Finance Director, Mr. Durham, checked with the County Auditor's Office, just for a reference point, and for a $100,000 value, the cost is $60.45. So I would encourage the residents to vote yes for this levy so we may continue the excellent services that we're getting. President Coin and I taped a cable show called City Government Discussion for our local cable TV channel, and it, we talked not only about the city's strategic plan, the five-year budget process, as well as an overview of some of the more recent capital purchases and expenses and the purposes of those. The link for this show is on the city website, www.madinaoh.org, in the news section, or you may watch it on the Armstrong Channel 37, if you get Armstrong. And if not, you can also, on a computer, go to www.madinaTV.org. And I'd like to thank Jared Frye from Madina TV for his assistance in getting this format on the air for us. Trick or Treat in the City of Medina is this coming Friday, October 31st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Chief Baraducci here shortly will discuss some of the safety and proactive plans that we'll have in place that evening. We've had a number of requests of the city to move the day, either a day earlier, a day later, because the weather's better, there's no football game. We've tried this in the past, and we literally have people calling us in January and February wanting to know when Trick or Treat is for the upcoming year because they plan parties and get-togethers and activities and family events. So we've had either equal or greater resistance when we've tried to move it from the 31st, so it will remain on the 31st from 6 to 8, at least for the foreseeable future. And then last but not least, Monday, November 10th, at 7:00 PM, is the annual Veterans Day Concert at St. Francis Church. The Medina Community Band performs there. Parking is available not only at the church, but the owners of 600 East Smith, our Law Director, and 620 East Smith, Mr. Gao, have both permitted those lots to be used for excess parking. The concert is free, no tickets are required, but guests are asked to bring a non-perishable food item to help support the St. Vincent De Paul Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor already touched on it, I want to touch on the EMS levy as well. As was mentioned, it's $60.45 per year for the owner of a $100,000 home. It's not a substantial amount of money. It provides the funding to pay for our emergency services for ambulance service. I want to point out, this is, there is no increase because it's a renewal. In fact, in my tenure here, this is the third time we've asked for renewal. We haven't increased this in at least the last 15 years, so it's, we've been able to get by on the same amount of money, and I think that's a good thing, and hopefully we can have support for that. Finally, on that, the, because it's a renewal, the state is phasing out some exemptions and so on. By doing this as a renewal, we preserve those exemptions. We want to make sure we get this renewal, get that exemption preserved so that the state pays a portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Baraducci, please chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor stated, he's asked me to let everybody know about the additional safety precautions for the Halloween this year, and we're going to have 11 marked police cars on the road during the hours of trick-or-treating. We're bringing out two sergeants, Scott Markham and Ed Kinney, that will each take half of the city and oversee the special patrol activities. The Medina Life Support Team and the Fire Department will both have two units out, one on each side of town in case of the need for medical response. And the Medina Community Police Academy Alumni Association, their members will be out in their own vehicles equipped with cell phones as kind of spotters in the neighborhoods to alert us if there's any issues. I'd like to just give a couple of tips. It'd be really, I think parents would be wise, if they're going to purchase Halloween costumes, that they be flame-resistant materials. Pick brightly colored costumes or add your own reflective tape so that motorists can see these kids. You know, when you're that age, you're running across the streets and everything else, it gets pretty dark out there, and that reflective tape can mean a lot. Pick brightly colored costumes. Attach your children's name and address, phone number somewhere inside the costume in case they get lost. No child under the age of 12 should be out by themselves. They should be with an adult. Make sure the child's costume is not too long, the shoes are proper fit. Use washable face paint instead of masks so your children's vision isn't compromised. Teach your children never to respond to a driver or pedestrian that calls out to them. Make sure your children don't eat any candy or food without checking with you first. Make sure your children have flashlights, especially if they're staying out after dark. Teach them to stay on the sidewalks and teach them to look and listen and be aware of cars before they step out. One last point is, don't go to houses where the porch lights are not on, and never enter anyone's house under any circumstances while you're trick-or-treating. Hope everybody enjoys it, it's a fun time of year. I can even remember when I was a youngster, it was a big deal. So we hope everybody will be saying, "What are you laughing at? What'd you dress up as?" Yeah, William Tell and I went out together. Thank you, Mr. President. Want to add anything, Greg?
Thank you. Ms. Rice, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a report.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
I do have a report.
Oh, you do have a report? Ah, dang it, that thing. How's that roll? I'm just trying to get rid of you.
Madinarec would like to remind the community that its basketball registration and skills testing is right around the corner. The dates for grades second through fifth are Wednesday, November 5th, Thursday, November 6th, and Saturday, November 8th. Rates are $50 for members and $60 for non-members. Grade six through 12th are Wednesday, November 12th, Thursday, November 13th, and Saturday, November 15th. Rates are $60 for members and $70 for non-members in that category. For times and other inquiries regarding the kindergarten and first grade leagues, please go to our website at madinarec.org, or download our brochure and look at page three, or call the front desk at 3307-216900. Last year, we had 1,100 kids registered for the basketball program to play, so don't miss those dates. Lastly, our next REC Advisory Board meeting will be Thursday, November 20th, at the REC Center at 7:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you for that great report. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Forestry Department Fall Tree Planting will begin in the next week and be completed by December 1st. 239 trees will be planted in the tree lawns. The locations for the trees are marked with yellow flags, and we appreciate residents' patience in this project.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the Building Department staff for all their hard work. I'm proud to say that with the current workload, the department's providing same-day service. That ends my report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This afternoon, the city's Board of Control awarded two construction contracts. One of them, the Lake Road Reconstruction, was reconstructing Lake Road between Lafayette and West Smith, and the second one is the Wadsworth Road Water Line, replacing a section of water line on Wadsworth Road. That project is being funded through a zero-interest loan provided by the Ohio Public Works Commission. Secondly, I want to notify everybody, the section of South Court Street, just north of Smith, this was recently resurfaced by ODOT. There's a couple hundred feet of that pavement that has been rejected. The material was not up to ODOT standards, so they're going to be removing it and replacing it. That'll happen this coming Wednesday, October 29th, starting at 9:00 AM. The material will be milled and removed and replaced. Should only take a few hours. Two-way traffic will be maintained throughout that operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the Service Department, currently, it's all about the leaves, as you understand. Tomorrow, Tuesday, October 28th, the crews will be vacuuming leaves in the northwest quadrant of the city, which is Ward 1. Upon completion of the northwest quadrant, they will advance to northeast zone, which is Ward 2, and then continue the rotation. This is the second pass and will continue as long as weather permits. Please remember, rake the leaves to the curb, not into the street, and the update is on the website daily by the supervisor and Dawn in the mayor's office. The number to call, the leaf hotline, is 330-725-LEAF. That's 5323, 725-5323. And then additionally, the city auction will be held this Saturday, November 1st, at the city garage. The address is 781 West Smith Road. I believe there's over 300-plus items. There's something for everyone. There's bicycles, cars, trucks, a sweeper truck, electronics, and tools. Again, the preview is at 9:00 AM, and the auction will start promptly at 10:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions, we have two of them. We have liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new C1 and C2 permit to Sunine Inc., doing business as VIP Mini Mark, 238 North Court Street.
Move not to object.
Second not to object.
Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colzar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Unfinished business, there's none. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council dinner devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded an opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Joyce Kimbler, and I am a resident of Seville, Ohio. And I just want to take a moment with the upcoming election and talk about the fact that I am a candidate for the Medina County Court of Common Pleas General Division. The Court of Common Pleas General Division is the court that handles felony-level criminal matters, and it handles cases with values of generally $15,000 and above. So it handles the more complex litigation in the county. It's easier to define the Court of General Jurisdiction by what we don't do. What we don't do is we don't do domestic relations, we don't do probate juvenile, and we don't do small claims and municipal court-type of matters. The judicial races have unique elements that I would like to talk about with the council and with the members of Medina City. Generally, in an off-year election such as this, maybe 50% of the population comes out to vote. In a judicial race, because we're at the bottom of the ballot, by the time you get to the bottom of the ballot where the nonpartisan races are listed, you have approximately a 25% drop-off in the people that are choosing to vote. That means that the judges that make some of the most important decisions that affect the lives of the people of Medina County are elected by maybe 25% of the voting population. The question becomes, why do people drop off, or why do they choose not to vote? And we believe that the reason is because a lot of people don't know what judges do, and they don't know what type of experience to look for when they are voting for a judge. As I mentioned, there are different types of judges, and this is the Court of General Jurisdiction. This is the type of court where I have the greatest experience. For 29 years, I have practiced solely in the Court of General Jurisdiction, Common Pleas Court, or in the federal courts, the appellate courts, or the Ohio State Court. I have handled over 1,400 cases at this level of court. I have handled over 100 jury trials. I have handled felony criminal matters. These are the types of questions and qualifications that you want to consider when you're looking at a judge that is going to handle that level of complex litigation. You want to choose someone who has taught for the Ohio Judicial College, someone who has taught for the Ohio Association of Civil Trial Attorneys, someone who has taught for the Ohio Bar Association. In addition, you want to choose someone who has served as a mentor to other attorneys who are new to the bench and who are learning to practice law at that level of courtroom experience. The other reason that they believe that there is the drop-off is that people just become somewhat weary, and by the time they get to the bottom of the ticket, they've kind of lost track, and they don't know who to vote for, and so they just kind of give up. One thing that you might want to do is, when you look at sample ballots, you might want to start at the bottom in your analysis. That's where a lot of your local issues are located. That's where the judicial races are located, because judicial races are nonpartisan. So when you are preparing to go vote, educate yourself. Go to the websites. Mine in particular is www.joicekimblerforjudge.com, not particularly creative. So go to the websites, examine your candidates, and then think about what you're going to do before you go vote, and vote, in your mind at least, from the bottom up so that you're hitting those key issues that most specifically attack and relate to your life on a day-to-day basis. I'm Joyce Kimbler. I ask for your vote on November 4th for the Medina County Court of Common Pleas General Division, courtroom number 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of city council. My name is David Sheldon. I reside at 4023 Fairway Drive in Montville Township, Ohio. I've been a resident there since 1997. I'm also a candidate for judge here in Medina County, for Medina County Probate Juvenile Judge. As city council is aware, and most of us are aware, there are many issues in the community facing our youth today, and the newsprint and media has focused on, I think throughout this past year, the issues of heroin abuse and addiction. We're all familiar with it. The Gazette wrote an article back in August saying it's in epidemic proportions, and it's affecting the youth in Medina City, it's affecting the youth throughout the county. What has kind of been glanced upon, but it's still an issue out there, and one which I've addressed to the voters that I've met out here in my campaign, the other main issue I think it's very important is mental health. Many of the youth that enter into our juvenile justice system have mental health issues, serious mental health issues. 65% to 70% of all the youth that come in contact in this country with the juvenile justice system meet the criteria for at least one mental health disorder. And while our juvenile system here in Medina does have remedies available at the end of the road, that is, after a juvenile's gone through, the process and been adjudicated delinquent and is now being disposed or sentenced, there are screening methods available in the detention center, but that's at the end of the rope. And the national studies and most of the studies regarding our youth in this country show that the earliest interdiction that we can have with youth results in better adjustment to the community, less recidivism rates, et cetera. And while the model back in the 90s was, hey, we need to put these youth behind bars, get them into detention centers, and we built and built detention centers and built more incarceration, that is now going the other way. And in this country now, our focus has been on, what can we do to make sure these youth do not come back into the system? And that is one of the main reasons I'm running in this particular campaign, and that's to ensure that the best possible programs are available for our youth in this community. And what I would like to see happen, and while Judge John Long, who is a great judge here on the Medina County Probate Juvenile Judge, instituted some great programs and they continue today, what I'd like to see is initiating a program for our youth that takes care of them at the beginning. That is, they're screened at the beginning when they come into the juvenile system, tools are implemented to see if they meet a mental health diagnosis. If they meet that mental health diagnosis, and we can get them into a treatment program, create an incentive for these youth to do the treatment, and therefore not come back as juvenile offenders, adult offenders, so they can complete a treatment program at the very beginning when they come into the system, I think that would help immensely for these individuals. Not so much worrying about them once they're in the detention center, let's worry about these kids right when they come into the juvenile system, right at the beginning when they're charged with a crime, when it's the most important in their lives. 65% of the kids that were admitted to the detention center in 2013 either required mental health treatment or substance abuse treatment. And many times, they're co-occurring issues, whether it's detention deficit, hyperactivity disorder, adjustment disorder, bipolar disorder, a lot of times, it's co-occurring with mental or with substance abuse. I think we can tackle these head-on at the beginning when they come into the system, and I think it'll be a great system here in Medina County, and that's why I'm asking voters to consider me on November 4th for this very important position in our Medina County Probate Juvenile Court. Also, I think what's very important, and as all of us know, technology plays a very important role in our lives today. It makes our lives easier. One of the big things I want to look at and consider having the voters consider, too, is the fact that we need an electronic case filing system in the court system. We don't have it in Medina County. Wayne County's got electronic filing system, Cuyahoga County's got it, we don't. It would make the lives of a lot of attorneys in litigants easier, it would reduce dependence on paper products and storage issues. So I would ask the voters of Medina County to consider me for the November 4th election, David Sheldon for Medina County Probate Juvenile Judge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 170-14, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a renewal contract with United Healthcare for healthcare insurance for employees of the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. United Healthcare is the same healthcare provider that the employees currently have.
Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 170-14, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a renewal contract with United Healthcare for healthcare insurance for employees of the city of Medina.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. United Healthcare is the same healthcare provider that the employees currently have, so we don't have the problem of changing cards and doctors and providers. Our broker is DS Benefits Group. They did a good job with United Healthcare of negotiating down the rate. The state average is about 12% to 14% in premium increases. I think because of our claims history, a portion, as well as some of the wellness initiatives that we've implemented, we were able to cut that increase down to about half of that, to 7%. And then with the plan design changes that we've implemented with a number of our unions, as well as non-union groups, that percentage increase for the city resulted, went from 7% down to 4.23%, which is pretty impressive at this point. The reason for the emergency clause is, by the time we get the paperwork all signed and to the insurance company, it takes them a while to get the cards and everybody all processed, and have that all in place before the end of the year, and to wait 30 days would stall that process.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Clerk, please call the roll on emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Any further discussion in the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 170-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 171-14, an ordinance amending ordinance number 12614, passed July 14th, 2014, relative to the expenditure to Secure-Tech for the purchase and installation of an amplifier and speaker system for the Uptown Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to increase the previously authorized amount due to a part that needed replaced that was not part of our original project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 171-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 172-14, ordinance authorizing the increase of expenditure to Wingfoot Commercial Tire Systems from $25,000 to $35,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. This will allow us to increase our purchase order in the sanitation department with Wingfoot with respect to tire and tire accessories that allow us to get through the rest of the year, the final quarter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 173-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 174-14, ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept two easements necessary for Lake Road Reconstruction Phase 2 project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you. Same scenario, but a different project. This is for our Lake Road project. These are storm sewer easements necessary to complete the project. One of them is a dual jurisdiction lot, but the other one is, and the second one is actually in the township.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 174-14 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 175-14, ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $247,467 to various vendor contractors for emergency repairs to South Court Street due to a water main break.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I'm sure all you know, we experienced a water main break on September 10th. As a result of that, we made a decision to reconstruct, replace the entire water main in the block of South Court between Washington and Smith. That project took about three weeks. During that time, we had engaged a number of contractors and materials suppliers for materials and labor to finish the project. We submitted the list to council. Some of these ranged from quite large, over $100,000, down to just $30 or $40. We're asking for the emergency clause, because this work has been completed. We're fortunate that these contractors and vendors were able to respond to us in an emergency fashion. We'd like to submit payment to them as soon as we can.
Thank you. I'd like to make a correction. I read from an older agenda, and it's really, the amount is $245,521 and not $247,467. That was my error. Is anybody else having any other questions or comments with respect to the emergency clause or the ordinance?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pacoli?
I would be abstaining on both due to conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments or questions? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Abstain.
Motion passes 681 abstention.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Colossar?
Abstain.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 175-14 passes 681 abstention.
Ordinance 176-14, ordinance amending ordinance 161-14, passed September 22nd, 2014, relative to the auction, sale, or disposal of city equipment and vehicles no longer in use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance. Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. Coin, President Coin. And speaking of errors, it was my error in not including the court, Muni Court, in the list for auctionable items. So I was able to get that list, Dawn and I, from Ms. Henry, and they have 72-plus items that we'd like to include in our auction, as you heard me report earlier, will be this Saturday, November 1st, so that's the reason for the emergency clause. So I appreciate the council amending this ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 176-14 passes 7-0.
Council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, November 4th, registered voters have an opportunity to vote to elect our US Congress Representative, governor, and other state officials, Medina County officials, and support at least one very important local item, the LST Renewal Levy. The LST provides ambulance and emergency medical services to those in need in the city of Medina and some townships. This 2.2 mil Renewal Levy preserves the homestead exemption. It does not increase your taxes for this year. It costs approximately $17 a month for the average home in town, and it does, and most importantly, it keeps a vital resource properly funded, so it can continue to provide a valuable service to the community. Any one of us can think of a time where the LST provided a service from helping a neighborhood fallen and needed assistance getting back up to their feet, to saving the life of a heart attack victim. My esteemed colleague, Denny Simpson, was featured on Channel 5 recently for his part in saving the life of one such victim. The LST is a direct link to the Cleveland Clinic. Depending on the nature of the emergency, the victim can be at any of the Cleveland or Akron's major hospitals in as little as 30 minutes, receiving the necessary care.